Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone here this morning. We will proceed by our roll call to order and then the roll call. Let's go. Is it supposed to appear up there?
Yes, sir.
Everybody okay?
It is if you will confirm, Mr. Owens.
All right.
And everybody is now present.
Very good. We will now stand and have our invocation in place, please.
Let us pray. Dear Father, we thank you that we are able to gather here today and we pray that you would give us wisdom to make the right decisions that's on the agenda before us. We pray that you will always lead us in the right direction so that we can lead thy people in this county. Be with everyone present today, be with those that have sustained loss during the hurricane. Grant them understanding and patience. And we thank you for the people that helped them, the utility people and the state people that we owe a great deal of gratitude to. Bless them also. These things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Please pray, please.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic with its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, let's vote. Raise your right hand. All right, all opposed like, so ordered. Let's see. Mr. Rhodes, are you up?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good morning.
We have two conditional use permits under review this morning. Both are for residential daycares. As you recall, both of these will be handled through quasi judicial procedures. And as we've mentioned numerous times, this is basically to establish facts concerning the case and anyone that speaks needs to be under oath. And it does also necessitate written findings of fact and any decisions that are appealed are to Superior Court. So with that, we'd like to have anyone sworn in that'd like to speak this morning by the clerk to the board. If you're here to speak on either one of these items, the bail or the Tyson matters, you may speak, step forward.
Do you sort of tell the truth, the whole truth?
I do. The first one is for Melissa Tyson and this particular property is located on Old River Road just south of this intersection with Ferris Construction Road. There's currently a double wide manufactured home on the site and the proposal here is to operate an in-home daycare between the hours of 6:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And this should be a familiar sight to you. We dealt with the commercial area, the red area, on the opposite side of Old River Road a few times before. In fact, it's your last meeting where we've been dealing with a self-storage facility that now has a number of other uses there. So the area that we're looking at today is on the opposite side of Old River Road, bounded in yellow here. And you can see a number of residential homes along that side of the road as well. As you know, when we've talked about these particular cases, we've had a number of residential daycares come through before. There are some conditions that have to be met. One is security fencing. Also, we note the hours of operation and certainly the location within a residential area. And the other thing that the board needs to consider anytime we're dealing with conditional use permit are the factors that had to be looked at or agreed upon as part of this proposal. And this is in your application package that's in your agenda this morning. First up, will the site materially endanger the public health or safety? Staff says it will not. Also, the African as well. Will it injure the value of adjoining or abutting properties? We say it will not. Is it in harmony with the area? We believe it is. Again, it's a residential daycare within a residential neighborhood. And is it in conformity with other plans put forth by the county? And we believe it is. So with that, staff is recommending approval. Motion one is to acknowledge that the application is complete. And the second motion is to approve the conditional use permit and one additional condition, and that is the hours of operation from 6:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. With that, Mr. Chairman, we're ready for the public hearing.
I declare the public hearing open. Are there anyone signed up to do that, Mr. Manager?
No, sir. We do not have anybody have signed up for this public hearing.
Is there a person present that desires to speak having not signed up, so indicate? If not, I declare the public hearing closed. What's the flip, Mr. James?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we follow the recommendations of the planning board pertaining to the daycare center on Old River Road.
Second.
Approve both motions.
Both of those motions have been made and circled and are in discussions. If not, you ready to vote? Everybody, if you're raising your right hand, if you're in agreement. So ordered. All right. Mr. Rhodes, I believe you're still up.
Yes, sir. Again, the second item this morning for a public hearing is also conditional use permit for residential daycare facility. We've been through the procedures for considering this particular item. And again, would ask if there's anyone here to speak on behalf of the bail conditional use permit. Would you please step forward to be sworn in? If not, we'll proceed. The conditional use permit in this case is on Rick Circle and this is off of Ol' Pactolus Road. This is located within a manufactured home park. And the hours of operation that's proposed for this particular use is between 6:00 a.m. and 12:00 midnight. This site, again, is located just adjacent to the city of Greenville's extraterritorial jurisdiction, basically across the road from Santry Mobile Home Park, if you're familiar with that area, off Old River Road. The area bounded in yellow is the particular lot that's to be considered for the residential daycare. Again, three main conditions to be looked at. Security fencing has to be in place. Also the location and the hours of operation. Similar to the other case that we just heard in with the bail conditional use permit, we also contend from the staff level that this particular use will not endanger the public health or safety, will not injure the adjoining property values. It is in harmony with the areas to be located within. And also, it is in conformity with the plans adopted by the board. Again, two motions here proposed with staff's recommendation for approval. The first is to acknowledge that the application is complete and complies with the zoning ordinance requirements. And the second is to approve the conditional use permit subject to the conditions and including the additional condition of the hours of operation between 6:00 a.m. and 12:00 midnight. And, public hearing.
I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Manager, have you have anyone sign up for this?
Um, no, sir.
Anyone present in the audience that desires to speak having not signed up? If not, I declare the public hearing open. What's the pleasure to close? What's the pleasure to bow?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this daycare center on the recommendation of our planning department and we approve both motions at the same time.
All right, in discussion. If not, all in favor indicate by raising your right hand. All opposed, like, sign so ordered. Melanie, I believe you're next. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. The public hearing that I need for you to have is for the installment financing agreement and the borrowing to fund the compactor replacement at Solid Waste, to put permanent financing on the probation and parole building downtown, and to pay for the radio system. We ran this ad as a not to exceed $7 million because we do not have the final bids on the compactor yet. They are due in on the 22nd. This will go to the LGC on October 3rd and it will be sized just enough to cover the costs once we have the final bids in hand. We have gotten three proposals from the banks and we would suggest that we award the financing to RBC Bank with a rate of 2.07 percent, which was the lowest of the three proposals we got. We also got a proposal from Wells Fargo at 2.19 percent and BB&amp;T at 2.33 percent. So the lowest net cost is the RBC financing at 2.07 percent.
Mr. Chairman, I just remind the board that the debt service on this, the compactor replacement at about a million and a half dollars, that portion of the debt service will come out of the enterprise fund for solid waste. The remaining portion for the radio system replacement and the probation parole building does come out of general fund. And in the budget workshops, we had discussed the free of capacity that would be available come July 1. And the plan right now is to use a portion of that free of capacity to make the annual debt payments. I believe this is a 10-year note with an annual total debt service payment of...
Just if you were to borrow six, say 6.5 million, it would be 650,000, 150,000 of which would come out of the solid waste fund and the accrued interest.
Melanie, how many lenders did you have to...
We actually solicited from seven. We didn't get proposals back from the rest of them.
Is that all the lenders in Pitt County or just...
We did for Citizens, Fifth Third Bank, Bank of America. That was the last one. Don't remember the seventh one off the top of my head. We use the list that we are seeing across the state that people...
I know you do. Just wanted the public to know what we were doing. Mr. Garris, I believe you want...
Mr. Chairman, this is something that we have been discussing as a board, all three of these projects, and I make a motion that we approve.
I second it.
But you gotta have your public hearing.
Oh, have the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
All right. Had you finished, Melanie?
Yes, sir.
All right. Having had the presentation, I now declare the public hearing open. Mr. Manager, do you have anyone signed up for this?
Yes, we have one person. We have Brenda Harris. She'll come forward, please.
All right, Ms. Harris.
A lot of times when we stand, we stand to document, not so much that you will agree. I'm Brenda Harris. I have been before you many times. Each time, I come with evidence. Most of the time in a public hearing, you want to shut me up quickly because of the evidence that I can give you. But I remind you of your responsibility under ethics and under the oath and under the laws of North Carolina and the federal laws. On that platform, I'm not in opposition to the projects that you have. I'm in opposition to the fact that back in the 1990s, there was a telephone call that went to the auditors of the tax department. It was a citizen that stood forth and sounded an alarm and said, "There's embezzlement happening, people." And then there was an investigation and there was an embezzlement. In the 1990s, there was a citizen that you were trying to take land under bilateral and a citizen called the federal people in and said, "There's landfill contamination, people. You're poisoning the people in the drinking water." And the evidence is that we don't drink our own water. We get it from aqueducts far in the ground. That citizen was correct. I come before you not as an agitator and I see agitation on your faces because I read very well. But I've come to document and tell you this, that if 60% of the adware taxes run this county and you are 30%, in my opinion, off base because the tax values are too high, you're about to pass a schedule of values. It doesn't matter what the evidence is because I asked for a report in May of this year from our county manager that makes over 160,000 a year. Melanie Bryant makes over 120. Our tax collector makes over 95,000. And I say, where is responsibility in government? If it hadn't been for a citizen to sound the alarm on that embezzlement, we would still be in the hole and there would still be a bag in your vault that people were putting cash in and sharing it the end of a week. Now, what I'm saying to you is your revenues are off. I can prove it. I can prove that there is over 150,000 accounts and an account meaning one citizen and if he has two cards, has two accounts. You chase the big money, you let the little money stay still. But the federal law says that you have to treat everybody equal. If I'm correct and your values in the tax department and what you submit to these lenders as your revenues and your assets for this county are correct, what happens is that you have committed fraud. So I'm asking again, documenting. I'm asking that you understand the oath that you've taken. And you take two hours and I'll bring the citizens in, give me a 30-day notice, and I'll show you the problems in your tax department, which means that they're 60% of your adware lumber. And I would stop sending my people to the school of government and I would send them to somebody that could teach constitutional law. Because if this citizen has sounded the alarm, folks, and I'm right, you have hung yourself publicly in front of these citizens and this tape because I get each one of them. Now, you have a blessed day and you make a decision on what you want. But if you commit wrong figures to a financial institution, regardless of whether you want to or you intended to or whatever, then you have committed fraud by federal and state law. I'm asking you to listen. I'm asking you to appropriate a time to listen. And then if my documents are not sufficient, I will close my mouth. But I already know that I'm stacked. Okay? Thank you. God bless you.
Anybody else?
No, sir.
Is there anyone present that did not sign up that needs to speak to the issue at hand? If not, I declared the public hearing closed. Now, Mr. Garris.
My motion stands.
My second stands.
All right, all in favor of Mr. James.
I want to ask a question. Out of this 6.5 million, Mr. Manager, how much, none of his earmark come from adware and taxes? Is that correct?
Well, technically, the debt service over 10 years is 650,000. 150,000, again, is coming from the solid waste fund, which the user fees that make up that fund would pay that portion. The balance would be adware taxes that are, again, we have the free of capacity in next year's budget through some expenses that we're incurring this year that we will not have to incur next year that will more than make the balance of debt service.
So we have it so that we won't have to...
This will not result in a tax increase.
Okay. So that's what I want to hear you say.
All right, Melanie.
Thank you. Scott, what is typically the enterprise fund for solid waste used for?
Well, it's used for the collection, well, the collection of the convenience sites and then the operation of a transfer station in which the solid waste is transferred to Bertie County into a MSW solid waste landfill in Bertie County.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion indicate by raising your right hand. All opposed? So ordered. Motion passes. Okay. Mr. Manager, what you got next?
Next, we have public addresses to the board.
All right.
We have one, two people signed up this morning. First, we have Tammy Elliott. She'll come forward, please.
Good morning. My name is Tammy Elliott and I am here this morning to announce the launch of the Pitt-Beaufort Community Resource Connection for the aged and disabilities. We're the 19th Community Resource Connection to be started in North Carolina and we're the very first east of I-95. I'd like to invite both the Board of Commissioners and the public to come out and celebrate the launch with a ribbon cutting ceremony tomorrow morning at St. James Church Fellowship Hall from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. at 2,000 East Sixth Street here in Greenville. You may be saying, "I've never heard of a Community Resource Connection or a CRC." So let me tell you a little bit about who we serve and what we do. We are not a building. We're not a place you can drive up to. We're a collaboration of agencies across Pitt and Beaufort County that serve people over the age of 60 and people over 18 with disabilities and their families. The goal of a CRC is to create a coordinated system of information and access by reducing the number of agencies a consumer must approach to receive services. Other words, our motto is you open one door and you make every connection for the services you need. What this really means is in the past, if you were over the age of 60 or you were a person with disabilities and you needed services, and lots of times it's multiple services that you need, you would have to travel, which is, and it's difficult for people in these populations and confusing to travel to agency after agency after agency. They have to retell their story each time, redo intake each time. When there's a CRC set up in a county, the different agencies that serve these populations have been trained to do options counseling. This could be anything from services for veterans, counseling for long-term care services, employment counseling, eligibility services, benefit for Medicaid, Medicare, and the resources available in the community. So virtually, you could choose to go to DSS as your portal of entry. You could go to the Council on Aging. You could go for services for blind, services for veterans. You would go in, you would tell your story once, you would do one intake, and they would counsel you on your different options for services. You would then give them permission to share your information with the agencies that would meet those services and they would refer you to them. You wouldn't have to go anywhere else. The people from the different agencies would contact you, provide the services for you, and that initial person that you talked to would be the one that would follow up with you. We're very excited that Pitt County is going to be offering a CRC to our community as baby boomers and generations to come is growing rapidly. We want to have an infrastructure in place in order to keep this population to have the choice to stay in their homes as long as possible in our community without needing long-term care facilities. This will save us local funds, federal funds, and state funds. So again, this is something for our community to be proud of. There's going to be over 20 agencies there tomorrow morning for our ribbon cutting that can provide information, door prizes, food. So we again invite our public to come out and help us celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Anybody else, Mr. Manager?
Yes, we have a second speaker signed up and I can't read the name on the list. It's Mr. Per... Help me. Come forward, please. If you, just give your name at the podium.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a statement?
Yes.
I know you're not supposed to read it, but what that young lady was talking about is very, very important. Some of us have been trying to get that to happen for, I have, for 10 years because they go to a place and they've got to fill out the same form time and time again. And so I think we need to get behind it, make sure that it works. It will save money. It will, the senior citizens, it will help them out tremendously. So I'm telling you, we need to, we need to stop this repeat, filling out all of these forms. Scott, you know what I'm talking about, don't you? I mean, we've talked about this stuff before. Okay, that's all I wanted to say, but I want to let you know it's important.
Yes, sir. State your name and where you live and proceed.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, members of the board. My name is Juvencio Peralta and I'm with the Association of Mexicans in North Carolina, based here in Pitt County. I'm here with you this morning to ask you to do a proclamation on the Hispanic Heritage Celebration here in Pitt County. For the past, since 1968, Hispanic Heritage Celebration has been celebrated across the United States. And we recognize that here in Pitt County, we have a large group of Latinos living in this, in our area. And for the past 10 years on the city level, we've been celebrating Hispanic Heritage Celebration. So this year, we are extending the celebration to the county wise. So one of the things that we ask in the county is to do a proclamation on Hispanic Heritage Celebrations. We do recognize in Pitt County, we have 5.47% of the Latino population in the county. On the city wise, we have 3.8% of the population. And on the student body at East Carolina University, we have 3% of the population. So I think it's an opportunity for our citizens to celebrate these enormous celebrations. And on the national level, North Carolina is number 10 with the growth of Latinos across the United States. Thank you so much, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You know, the city of Greenville has honored this request in the past and I think it's only appropriate that the county, we have before you a copy of the proclamation that I'd like to make a motion that we do honor that request and have a Pitt County...
Mr. Malawon, will you make your motion to put it on the agenda under decision matters? Is that your motion?
I'd like to make the motion that we do it now.
All right, that's what you want. What's...
I got a motion.
All right. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion indicate by raising your right hand. All opposed? My opposed is opposition is technicality. It's not the issue of it. I think that we were supposed to go through the process of putting it under decision time and that's the reason, Mr. Malawon. All right, what's next?
Next is items to report under the county manager's report. Just announcing our next meeting dates. Your next meeting dates as a board, month of October, you'll be back on a regular meeting schedule, 1st and 3rd Monday, October 3rd at 9:00 a.m. and then October 17th at 6:00 p.m. The next item, just want to give a brief recap. As the board is well aware, last Tuesday, the board had a special meeting to discuss Hurricane Irene recovery, first on behalf of Pitt County and the different agencies in the county. The, since that time and as part of that meeting, we announced that Pitt County had been declared for disaster assistance, the federal declaration for what they call the IA, the individual assistance, the PA, the public assistance. The individual assistance is primarily for low interest loans, grants, emergency assistance such as food stamps. Public assistance is the debris removal, repair of government buildings as such. Also, since that time, we have opened what is known as the DRC. There's a lot of acronyms involved in government, especially federal government. The DRC is the Disaster Recovery Center. That has been opened in the agricultural center, the Pitt County Ag Center, and it is fully operational. Folks can go there for help or assistance. We've also had widely advertised or posted the 800 FEMA number in the FEMA website for folks to go for assistance as the first portal of entry. The transfer station and our convenience centers have been very busy receiving the different debris, the tree limbs and whatnot. We've had expanded hours of operation, working with the city's contractor, Sirius, as they, and the city crews are clearing within the city. Now DOT is going to be, beginning to clear the right of ways of state maintained public right of ways. Otherwise, last week, we did have the Secretary of Crime Control and Public Safety come in with some other officials. Booley was out there hosting that. I went out and joined them for a few minutes and they were touring our DRC operation and basically asking us how we were doing. Right now, the, our continued role in the cleanup is to collect the debris at the convenience centers or collect it at the transfer station. As Mr. Denver had, John Denver had mentioned last week, we are in the process of releasing an RFP, Request for Proposals, for a chipping contract, actually have a vendor come in and grind and chip all of the storm-related debris that we have that will then in effect be mulch that the public can have and we don't charge for that mulch. Another issue I know that is on people's minds is vector control or mosquito control, mosquito population, just due to A, at the time of the year, B, the amount of rain we've had has, I think, really increased due to those factors. Has Dr. Morrow came in?
Yes.
Okay. He and I have had a little bit of correspondence. He had corresponded with me about outside group that is coming in, coming in that I believe that his department will be consulting with to help us. And we may be looking at some aerial spraying. And we, at the same time, will do our best to even see if we can't get FEMA to directly pay for this. Or if we pay for it, then we may try to see if we can get it reimbursed, whether it's reimbursable cost or not. But that is kind of a recap. Obviously, when we met last week, when you met as a board, you, we spent well over an hour on this briefing you. But just for the public's benefit and just update the board a little bit, wanted to put that back on here for you. Did the board want to hear any more about the vector control from Dr. Morrow?
What's the pleasure? What you say is fine, what you know?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I just, I just want to make a comment.
Go ahead, Doc Johnson.
The, having lived through the 1999 event, I do believe that the mosquitoes are just as bad as they were then. And I do agree with the idea of the aerial spraying. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
What is the 800 number for FEMA? Never have gotten it. Everybody talks about it, but nobody gives it.
I have got that in my file, but I did not bring it up here.
I think we need to...
James has got it.
James?
Yes, it is.
621-3362.
I've been asked that, and I couldn't give it to him, James.
Is that what you need, Mr. James?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Ward?
In our Friday, I don't remember whether it was this Friday packet or the Friday before, we had a printout about the crops--
Yes.
--in the county, and I think that, that total figure was very significant, and I haven't heard that stated publicly, and I think that need, and I haven't seen it in the paper either.
Right. Mitch Smith, Director of Corporate Extension, his folks had went out and did a crop survey immediately after the hurricane, and basically, the estimate they came up with was about thirty-six million dollars in crop damage, and maybe greater than that when it's all said and done. That is a large number, large amount of devastation.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else on this?
No, but it's had one other item, and it's not on the, the agenda, but our planning director, James Rhodes, asked me to announce the comprehensive land use forms that we had previously scheduled, but obviously, due to Hurricane Irene, the following week, we had to postpone. We are having two of those this week, Tuesday and Thursday. First one will be September thirteenth, which is Tuesday, five to seven PM, and this is at the Arthur Christian Fellowship Hall. The second one will be Thursday, September the fifteenth, from five to seven, and this will be at Belvoir Elementary School. The remaining three forms will be rescheduled at a later date.
Mr. Chairman.
That's all I have.
What's next?
We have Dr. Reed for her quarterly report, if she's here.
Yeah.
She'll come forward, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. It's the tenth day of school, and you've been talking about Irene. We had two days, and then we had Irene, and we said it felt like we'd been in school for twenty days getting back, but we appreciate your support, certainly the support of first responders and utilities folks across the district. You all know, we deal with six different utility companies, so getting all of our schools back up and running was no small feat. We ask for your help if you get asked the question, what can the state do for us? We've been trying to communicate with, we had a conference call with Governor Perdue and Bill Harrison, the Chair of the State Board, and our State Superintendent June Adkinson, in asking for flexibility and makeup. With one school that had to stay out longer, we would really like the opportunity for that school to be able to make up by adding additional hour a day as opposed to an additional day, and the state sees makeup as days instead of hours, and it would be nice. We know some of our brothers and sisters to the east are still out of school, and the state is going to have to look at some kind of flexibility in allowing those districts to make up, so. Other than that, we're off to an, an awesome start. As of day eight, even with a hurricane, we were concerned about numbers and kids with no power and their ability to get to school. As of day eight, we exceeded our projections for enrollment, and I'm not going to give you a number because we don't do that until the twentieth day, but we are growing, and that's a positive. Interestingly enough, we have a larger kindergarten class this year than we've seen in several years, which we also see as a good sign that, that folks are choosing our school system for kids to enroll and start. In fact, we are having to add, probably on the tenth day, we'll add several sections with additional new teachers around the district and kindergarten because that's where the growth seems to be. We also, you've probably had some phone calls, I wanted to address the issue of consolidated bus routes. I had to thank Dr. Morrow last week, for those of you who attended the Community Leaders Session. The change in routing was really due to a half a million dollar reduction in funding from the state for transportation, and we have gone to more community stops, and kids are walking a little further. Thank you, Dr. Morrow, for commending us and making us look like we were being very health-conscious and contributing to the issue of reduced childhood obesity. That was really not our intent, but we do see that there is benefit for students. It has been very perplexing, I made these comments last week, to have parents call you and say that their thirteen- and fourteen-year-old can't walk two-tenths of a mile to a bus stop, and so maybe we're helping with the issues of neighborhoods being a little more involved and folks being a little more involved in supervising kids as they walk to the end of a, of a subdivision. We are still making adjustments in those routes. We do a lot of that by technology, and they can't see all the things that need to be seen with the human eye, and so our folks are still working to make adjustments. But the, the reduction we saw in transportation also did not include what our quarterly fuel allotments would be. So depending on what happens to the price of gas, we, we are still sort of in a risky situation in terms of being sure we can balance that budget. We, we feel good, though, about the fact that we did not have to reduce teaching positions this year. We sent back positions to the state as a part of our discretionary reduction, but those were allotments sent to us based on increased enrollment that we never filled. So what does that mean? Well, that means if we could have filled them, we would have more teachers in the district than we do today, but by not filling them, we don't take jobs away from existing teaching staff. With the legislature increasing class size in grades one through three, we actually added seventeen additional teaching positions in Pitt County this year. We did have reductions in classified staff, and again, those reductions were done through vacancies, so we were able to place everyone who needed a job unless performance was an issue. If someone, someone had performance issues, our reduction enforced policy did not relocate them into another position. So with that, we have about thirty less teacher assistant positions, about twelve less custodial positions, and about sixteen, six, excuse me, less clerical positions. And part of our ability not to have to make reductions greater than that was the federal jobs money that we held on to last year. So we're hopeful that over a two-year period, we can use vacancies and turnover as a way to absorb those reductions as opposed to having to actually lay folks off. I also wanted to make you aware that we, we're very proud of our, our own Board of Education who made reductions last year to local dollars, and in doing so, have allowed us to plug some gaps that the state created. The most important one, I think our community needs to be aware of, is that the state, again, zeroed out textbooks. So for the second year in a row, there are no dollars for textbooks, textbook replacement or new textbooks. And so if you, if you also hear from parents who generally get very concerned if their high school student doesn't bring home a biology book or an algebra book, if you could see the condition of these books, you would understand why teachers are holding on to that good set of thirty they have and using them in class. We do have the ability for parents to access textbooks online. Not everybody has the ability to get online and access them, but our teachers are being very creative about trying to extend the life of textbooks. The state also cut us by six hundred and sixty thousand dollars in classroom supplies and materials. These are dollars that go directly into teachers' classrooms, and our local Board of Education used savings that they created locally to plug that gap. So no school or no classroom saw a reduction in supplies and materials based on reductions that the local board made in the local budget, which comes through you. So you also need to take a little bit of the pat on the back for helping us be sure our teachers have what they need in Pitt County classrooms. Several of you attended our event on August third, but I do want to just share with you some of the best news we've had for our district in a long time. The big one is that our graduation rate has reached seventy percent, and that is not where it needs to be, but it is almost a thirteen-point increase from where we were two years ago. For a couple of our high schools, they have, they have made huge gains. South Central, more than twenty-five-point increase in their graduation rate, and Farmville Central, seventeen-point-seven-point increase in their graduation rate. So we are glad to see that some of the efforts out there around the county are beginning to pay off. We know graduation is tied to dropout, and last year, we did see a twenty-five percent reduction in our dropout rate based on preliminary numbers, and we don't finalize them until the fall. We think we're going to see another significant decrease in dropout during the two thousand ten-eleven school year. We believe that there are a couple of things that have had a huge impact, and I just want you to know that they were begun with grant funds, and we continue to fund them as a district with remediation and at-risk dollars, one of those being Project Equal, a brand-new program that we started last year. It resulted in probably, when we get the final numbers, we're probably looking at more than a twenty percent reduction in out-of-school suspensions. This is where students for category-one offenses stayed after school and basically did chores, scraped gum, cleaned walls, they were supervised, they didn't like it, their parents loved it, but they stayed in school. And in fact, we, we were able to, to recapture more than twenty-seven thousand hours of instruction last year for these kids just by them being in school and having a consequence that was some kind of work duty or chore or community service, quote, unquote. So that was certainly something we felt we needed to continue as a district. And we have shared with you before, so I won't go into a lot of district, our Twilight Program, the ability for kids to take courses after school from four to seven in all six of our high schools. We had one hundred and forty-one students graduate with their class in June that would not have graduated, would not have graduated if it had not been for their ability to catch up in the Twilight Academy. So we know that that program had a direct impact on saving kids and also helping them catch up and graduate on time. So we appreciate all that you have done. Many of you have supported that effort individually and collectively. We also saw an increase, interestingly enough, in the state legislature, an increase in career and technical education support last year, so we have added programs. And I know it has been an important priority of this body that we continue to do that. We have been able to add programs in the district. At the same time, we saw more than a million-dollar reduction by the state in our Exceptional Children's Program. So we had to make reductions in those areas as well, particularly in, in that program, those were in teacher assistant positions and not in teaching positions for children with special needs. All that said, we, we want you to know, we're excited. We opened Lake Forest Elementary School. Today, it has seven hundred and twenty-three kids there of the seven hundred and forty student capacity. It's exciting to see kids ride their bikes to school, walk to school in that neighborhood. Last week, we had our first parent meeting there, and there were not enough chairs for all the parents who showed up to support their children. So I think it is also a good example that parents really want to be involved, and when schools are accessible, they do get involved in their children's education. I thank you for this opportunity. I hope it works for you. It's been good for us to get a chance to come and share with you and answer any questions that you have.
Any questions?
Sure.
All right, Eugene?
You know, in the past, we've been, you've been requiring, not you, but the Board of Education, has been requiring twenty-eight units to graduate, and the state of North Carolina, I believe, is twenty-one. And I know you all are working to lower that. Have you lowered that yet? And if so, what? Because, you see, that could still take the twenty-eight, but why put twenty-eight units when the state of North Carolina only requires twenty-one?
The first step, Mr. James, that the board took last year was to add language to their board policy that said that any student who turned nineteen and had the twenty-one credits required by the state could graduate. And that was to allow us some time to continue this year to work on that alternative diploma opportunity. So that is still being looked at. How we implement it and do it fairly is still in the works, but that first step was taken, and we had about thirty-eight students last year who were able to benefit from that and graduate.
But why nineteen? If the state of North Carolina, you know you have to have certain units, of course, four English's, two math, or the way it used to be. Things are so much different now, but I don't think they brought anybody educated than these people were when they were going to high school. But why nineteen? Why not let these students get out, go get their jobs, go to college before nineteen if they go to Pitt Community College? That's my concern.
Well, and there are just a lot of factors that weigh in that and a lot of opinions about it, and that's why we're, it's, it has not been lost. We are still working on it, and we'd still like to be able to offer that, not just age-related to nineteen.
Yeah. Well, see, I taught school for thirty-five years in the classroom, and there are certain students, well, I won't go to that, but when I was in high school, it was sixteen units. Then it went up to eighteen, and high in the world, it jumped to twenty-eight. I will never know. Somebody went to sleep, I didn't know what they were doing on the Board of Education, and I'll tell them, because they were here. But because if you have twenty-eight units, they won't take twenty-eight units, that's theirs, but those that want to get out and start to college or want to get out and go to work, they should be given that diploma and the opportunity to take and to do that. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman, and I still believe in that and believe very strongly that we are missing the both. And that's one of the reasons that our dropout rate is as high as it is, because they get disheartened and give up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to commend you, Superintendent Reed, for the twenty-five percent reduction in your dropout rate. I'm still wondering, how would, how do we compare with the state average?
Well, I, I appreciate you saying that because I don't know if I said it here, but I've said it in a lot of places. We celebrated, did our little dance in the hall, and then said, we've got to roll up our sleeves because that still does not, that still puts us above the state average. We're, we are very optimistic that with the numbers for ten-eleven, if they are what we believe they are, that we will, for the first time, come across that and get below the average mark, which is our goal, certainly is to be, not still be, have above-average dropout rate.
Right. We also, at least I get a lot of concerns, letters and emails from, from, from some of the citizens reference to the bus stops, and certainly, I'm, I let them know that I'm not on the Board of Education, so I refer them back. But are there, are you all having a considering special consideration for unique circumstances or unique situations for bus stops? Because you might recall, and I just recently got an email from a gentleman, and he had a, seemingly to me, a very unique situation, and I'm just wondering, do you, do you consider those things, or do you just typically? How are you handling that?
All, all of these are looked at individually. In fact, in some cases, several of us will go out and look at a situation. What we're trying to do is not increase the number of stops, so we're more willing to change a stop. If the stop is here, and we can find a better place for the stop, change the stop. What we're trying to really hold against is adding additional stops, and that's the piece that I would say we're less flexible with, only because every time we stop, it's dollars we don't have. But in terms of where is that stop and can it be in a better place? Yes. There are some guidelines for looking at stops, like the younger the child, you know, we, one of the, one of the things you may hear is, well, the bus came in, stopped twice for elementary, but it only stops once for middle school. Yes, that's accurate. If they're little, they're not walking as far. If they're, if they're middle school or high school, they may be walking to the end of the street or the development. But certainly, we are looking at those, at those individual situations.
My final question is the unitary status. Where are we with that, and how was that? It seemed like I read something on that subject just not long ago.
Well, we are, we have until December of two thousand and twelve to take our plan back to federal court. What you may have seen recently was the challenge to the Student Reassignment Plan, which was focused predominantly on Lake Forest Elementary School, which Judge Howard said the plan that we used certainly did, because it was neighborhoods, feeding schools, would not have been an impediment to our achieving unitary status, which is good news for us as a district moving forward. It doesn't mean we've achieved unitary status. What we have done is put a lot of strategies in place, and this year is an important year for us to measure the impact of that, so that when we go in December of two thousand and twelve, we can say, these are the kinds of steps we've taken to try to improve district outcomes and work towards unitary status. But there is a, a huge link on our website to all the data we've collected-- say, these are the kinds of steps we've taken to try to improve district outcomes and work towards unitary status. But there is a, a huge link on our website to all the data we've collected, and the next piece that will go up there that we've worked on over the summer, Mr. McGlaughorn, is a listing of all of those strategies under each of those unitary criteria. So what are we doing? That will be the piece that goes up next, so anybody can click on there and say, here's what the data says, here's what the district's doing about it.
Thank you.
Anybody else at this end? If not, Dr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say, as one of the two liaison members of this board, to the school board, that I am pleased with the effort our school board and the superintendent and her staff are doing with the challenges that we have. It appears to me that they are doing an exceptional job. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else got any comments for the superintendent? If not, we thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
All right, Dr. Moore.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me this morning. Just wanted to take a brief moment to tell you about our recent accreditation. It's actually a re-accreditation. North Carolina is really a leader in public health, and particularly in accreditation. We were one of the first states that implemented accreditation of local public health departments. That started in 2007, and Pitt County, which, Pitt County Health Department, which has been around for nearly 100 years now, was one of the first counties starting to go accreditation in 2007. We scored 100 percent during that accreditation, which was extremely rare, so rare that as we went through re-accreditation this year, we didn't hit 100 percent again. But we did pass 140 out of 141 activities, giving us a score of about, I think, 99.5 or 99.7. So I just want to, we were officially accredited in July of this year. I have a copy of our accreditation certificate we've received, and we are re-accredited until 2015. Interesting, it's interesting that right now, the, the nation is looking at public health accreditation. They've just created a National Public Health Accreditation Board. They're modeling that system off of North Carolina's system that was developed with help from folks in Chapel Hill. And so we think we're going to be in really good stead when the national accreditation requirement, if it does come down, we're going to be, we're going to be ready for that, too. So just very proud of my staff that did an excellent job, particularly Joe Morgan coordinated this. She's our Health Education Director, many of you know her, but she does an outstanding job, as well as our other staff, that, that really buys into the accreditation. And it's not just a process, a paper process, that we go to, go through. We incorporate this into our quality improvement process, that we're looking at, how do we make the Pitt County Health Department better every day, serving, serving the clients here and the, and the citizens?
Thank you, Doc, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a member of the Pitt County Board of Health, I am pleased to watch as our director and his staff continue to make improvements that will improve the services to the people of Pitt County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further comments? If not, appreciate the doc.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Booker. Good morning.
You have your tax collection report for August. If you refer to that, the property tax collection rate for August was 58.94 percent, and that is approximately what it was at this time last year. And do you have any questions on the report?
Any questions? If not, do we have a motion to accept?
Second it.
Second, indicated by raising your right hand. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Elliott, I believe you wanted to respond something back to Mr. James, or?
Yeah, I just was thinking about the, the proposed borrowing that you approved for the three projects, and just want to make the statement that if all things being equal, if we were to go into the next fiscal year for 1213, the excess, the excess capacity would be there, like we presented during the budget workshops. But need to remember as well that, you know, we've told the board and told the public that obviously this is, is a reevaluation year that we're prepping for, that will be effective January 1, 2012. And we have stated so far that we are, we are seeing a decrease in the tax base, overall tax base. Not a dramatic decrease, but we told you back in the workshops, between 5 and 10 percent. And we also said back in the workshops that, you know, right now, our, our current tax rate is 66.5 cents per $100. So if the tax base were to drop 5 percent to bring in the same amount of dollars, it'd take about a 70-cent tax rate to, to do that. So, and also, if we were to go the more dramatic extreme, a 10 percent drop in that base, then you're looking at double, probably have to get about a 74 cent rate. So this project is not going to drive a tax increase, because technically, of all things being equal, if we were to, if we weren't doing a revale, we move from fiscal year 1112 into 1213, if it was not a revale year, that excess capacity would be there. But the fact that the overall tax base is dropping, yes, there is a tax rate issue that will have to be dealt with at tax time, but it's not driven by, necessarily by this project. So I just did want to clarify that and not mislead Mr. James or the board or the public.
Does that help you, Mr. James?
Yes, it does, but I think you need to be kind of looking at ways that we can save money, Mr. Chairman.
And that reminds me, another point was, this project is a federally mandated project, the radio system portion of it. So it's not a project we could defer, put off. If we're not, we'll get sanctions from the FCC, beginning the, at the implementation, I believe it's January 1, 2013.
Yeah, I, I'm not against that motion. I'm for it 100 percent. But what I'm saying is this, don't count on going up to 70 cents, don't count up going to 75. So we'd better be looking at ways.
Sure.
Well, you know what I'm going now.
Sure.
Mr. Harris.
That, the 5 percent you mentioned, now, that is 5 percent of 65 or 70 million.
No, it's, the taxable base of Pitt County, we have $11.5 billion of taxable property. So if we were looking at the 10 percent, you'd be talking about $1.5 billion in value that would be dropping off due to the current economic conditions and realities.
Okay, so my real question is, 5 percent, how much money would that reduce our taxes?
3 point, well, it'd bring in $3.5 million at 5 percent, less than what we're bringing in today.
Okay, so it would more than offset the 2.7 that we were talking about, we would be benefiting from, from the payroll accounting thing?
I think payroll accounting was only about 1.2, wasn't it?
It was 1.2.
Benefits is about 1.6 million payroll, plus all the labor costs. So a 5 percent drop in the base would be no greater than.
Okay.
Mr., Dr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This board has, has received information all along from the county manager that the next budget will be a challenging time. And it doesn't mean that we need to take specific action now, more than we've already done. The county manager has not filled vacant positions, and I, I, I wonder how we're going to reach our goal, but we will reach it one way or the other. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion approved?
Motion to approve, Commissioner.
Second it.
In discussion, not indicated by raising your right hand. Motion passed. Mrs. Janice, I believe you're next.
Yes, we have on your items for decision a reversion of a school property back to the Board of Education. Back in 1997, there were actually, we've now discovered, there were five school properties that were put into the county's name because repair work was done as a result of funds they received from a state-level bond issue. When they received those state bond funds, they made repair work to those schools, and we put those schools in the county's name so that we could seek a sales tax refund on the cost of construction materials at that time. There was also a lease that went into place at that time that allowed the schools to lease back the properties since they were put into the county's name. And the terms of that lease required that when all of the repairs and work was done, that the county would revert title back to the Board of Education. So in your agenda package today is one for the Chakot School, because at the time of the printing of the agenda, that was the one that I was aware of. Further research since that time tells me that there were five schools involved, and those schools include the Bethel School, Aiden Elementary School, WH Robinson, and the other school in Winterville, which is?
Hedges Cox.
Hedges Cox. So on your agenda this morning, I have included a deed that would allow the Chakot School property to revert back, and I'd ask the board to approve execution of that deed this morning. I'll bring back to you in October the deeds for the remaining four, unless the board so chooses to do all five this morning, the deeds would read exactly the same, just inserting the different description for each school, and then that would eliminate an item on October 3rd. But if you're more comfortable, I can bring those schools back. It'll be the identical information.
It's pleasure to board.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Is it a state law that mandated that the county of Pitt turn over all land that we purchased for the Board of Education to the Board of Education? I want to know why. I've always wondered that.
We, we did it in order to recoup the sales tax reimbursement.
Yeah.
If it was in the school's name, then the county could not have sought the sales tax that the contractors paid, so that's why it was put in our name.
Why can't we do it, we do do it on other things, don't we?
Law precludes the school system from receiving the sales tax dollars back that we as county government can. May I clarify?
Yeah.
But we also use restricted sales tax that is directly for school use to buy the land. It's not county dollars that we buy the land.
Oh, you say that's the reason.
So at the point in time, we don't need the building and land that's collateral.
Well, I understand. Okay, that's, that makes sense.
Ms. Ward?
I'd like to make a motion that we proceed with this deed transfer back, and I'd like to include all the schools that you named, as well as the Chakot School.
Second it. All right, in discussion, not in?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
As a related comment to what Mr. James had to say, Mr. James, this is one of the issues, that is, the sales tax reimbursement, that we needed to go to Raleigh. And to this date, I haven't been able to get you to go help us lobby in Raleigh. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I don't suppose that needs a response, Mr. James.
No, it doesn't.
So let's vote by raising your right hand. All opposed? So ordered. Okay. Phil?
You have a letter in your packet concerning solid waste permit for the construction of a waste energy facility at Justin Whitehurst Transportation.
Do we have a motion?
I say move.
Second it. One question.
Discussion.
Phil, do you believe that? And you may not have looked into the details of this yet, because I know, I know it's a new project, but if, when our contract expires with Bertie County, and we decide to put our waste with this company, wouldn't, wouldn't that save us money? Couldn't that, doesn't that have the potential of saving us money?
It should, I may tell you more than you want to know, but this process has been around in some form for close to 100 years, and the, the problem has been the cost. So if the demonstration project shows that they can give us a better price, then yes, we would save money. But that is one purpose of the demonstration project, to determine whether the cost is in line or not.
Any further discussion? If not, in the, the smoke, raise your right hand if you're in favor. All opposed? So ordered. Okay, who's next?
Noel. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. On July 11th, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners approved the bid proposal and the advertising.
Do we have a motion on that?
Please.
Second it.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should hear a little bit of the detail.
All right, read it out for him, Noel, please.
Okay. We released that bid proposal. It came back. We only received one proposal that did come back. It was for $94,468.95 for each remount. That was for a new chassis and a remount, for a total of $188,937.90. Did present this to the EMS Oversight Committee last Thursday night, and they did suggest and approve the recommendation to accept this, and this is in keeping with the Fleet Management Plan.
Any further questions, Dr. Johnson?
No, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, you're ready to vote? Raise your right hand if you're in favor. Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Kathy again, I believe.
According to the adoption of the 2012 Schedule of Values, you have a sheet with the statutory required steps to adopt. On August 1st, you were delivered the Schedule of Values. On August 6th, there was the public hearing. On August 22nd, it was published on August 6th, and the hearing was held on August 22nd. Today, according to North Carolina General Statute 105317, you are to adopt the final schedule, standards, and rules, and issue an order adopting those. Do you have any questions about the Schedule of Values?
Any questions? If not, what's the pleasure to board?
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, indicated by raising your right hand. All opposed? Like, signed, so ordered. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, the, Mr. Scott Elliott, I believe you're next.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Board members, you have an appointment to the ABC Board. This is on page 136 of your agenda package. You have the term of, William Till has expired. I believe he has served a number of eligible terms, and you have a list of the applicants within the package who are interested and eligible to be appointed to this board.
Mr. Gash?
Mr. Chairman, on most of our boards and commissioners, we do have a county commissioner representative. On this board, we do not. That's why I would like to nominate Melvin McGlaughorn to serve in this capacity.
Any other nominations?
I moved it to nomination season, it'd be appointed by the commission.
All right, all in favor of that, raise your right hand. All opposed? So ordered. Okay, what's next?
Okay, next we have Commissioners' comments.
Dave?
Dave?
Comments?
No comment.
Mr. James?
No comment.
Mr. McGlaughorn?
No.
Ms. Smith?
No, thank you.
Ms. Ward?
No, thank you.
Mr. Gash?
No additional comments.
Mr. Webb?
No comment.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to raise a little.
We have to vote first.